On the TVs, I don't know if I can do this.
No, no, I'm telling myself what to do. So I started my day chasing a calf, ended my day chasing a pig. I surely did. We want to take, we should take bets. I'd say five fifteen. You think five? You got five, what do you got?
Six thirteen.
See, that's unfair because you control the dollar.
Well, I didn't say put money on it. I could. It is two o'clock. Welcome, 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 glad everybody's here today. We're going to call a meeting to order, just a couple of quick reminders I have over here. First off, I want to thank everyone who was able to go and join in on leadership training. I think that was very worthwhile, and I do want to thank everybody. Those who were not able to be there, we are going to catch you up on that. And reminder, today will be a long meeting. We just were talking about how long it might be, but we are going to try to follow the times as provided as closely as possible. And again, if we need more conversation, then we can always move to that if we need to. So at this point, would you please call the roll for us?
Pete Wildebohr.
Present.
Pat Bradford.
I am here.
Josie Barnhart.
Here.
Stephanie Cravill.
Here.
Melissa Mason.
Here.
Hugh McManus.
Here.
Stephanie Walker.
Here.
Again, welcome everyone. Next order of business, I'm going to use my New Jersey taste, so I do apologize for that. Next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
First and second, Ms. Cravill.
Yeah, the, I would like to suggest that we pull item G, teacher support. Not that I don't support that, but I feel like that's something we're going to be discussing in our work session coming up within the month, either this month or the beginning of January.
So you'd like to pull that, basically table that until that time?
The, not table it, I would like to postpone that item until our work session.
Okay.
But I don't, but I'd want to have discussion from Ms.
Can we be assured it'll be in the work session?
Absolutely. You good with that, okay? We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have first and second discussion. If not, this is a motion to pull or to postpone the teacher support discussion until the work session. All favorably signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass is seven zero, and is so postponed.
Do we have a date for the work session yet?
We do not, we're going to try, I guess, probably as busy as December is probably looking at early January. We'll get, we'll get some more dates out. Okay. So we have a motion and second. We have amended agenda at this point. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the amended agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, seven zero. At this point, we'll have our invocation.
Tonight we invite your presence in this special school board meeting. You are well aware of the issues on the agenda tonight. This board has selected with passion, sincerity, and great concern for the safety of our students, teachers, parents, administrative staff, and for those who work and volunteer in our school system. Dear God, grant each board member tonight wisdom that only comes from you. Wisdom to hear clearly the deliberations that take place tonight. We pray God that each board member to hear clearly from you as they make their decisions.
God, we pray that you will grant them the wisdom to do what is best for all that are under their care. And dear God, we thank you for the privilege to serve you in this, in this way. And at the end of the day, may you be pleased with the work that we have done tonight. May we get a good night's rest from our efforts. And God would you bless all and each of us as you keep us in the hollow of your hands. In his name we pray. Amen.
We ask Ms. Walker to lead, to lead our pledge today. Ms. Walker?
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair. That was Reverend Barnett, right, from Warren Temple? Just making sure that we didn't announce. Sounded like him, anyway. Okay.
Okay. Am I the only one here? Because I've got national anthem. Allegiance. Two boys, yeah, I'm the wrong one.
Mr. Wildebohr, you know you're a little bit out of order.
Yeah, I just noticed that because I'm looking at the wrong one. I got two in front of me here. So we'll go back, let's see, okay.
I'm trying to keep time for you, and it's.
Thank you. Okay, we've already approved the agenda, so let's go on to our proposed items. And again, as we've always done, I will call, I'll read it out. If you would like to stop. I do know that Ms. Mason had mentioned to me in a conversation that we do need to pull her during the consensus items. I believe it is, let me see, let me see, let me see. I, no, it's not I. It is J, J, so that's already noted. I lost it. So we'll start with our, this is for next week. Opening, call to order, roll call, approval of the agenda, invocation.
Privilege agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
The, is now a time that we could ask for something to be added to the agenda?
Next week, we actually need to make the motion next week, I believe.
Okay.
Proper, just time due to, to make a motion to add something to that.
Okay, what I would like to give my colleagues a heads up.
That'll be good.
That I would like to add policy twenty-three thirteen invocations to the policy item, which is letter number seventeen.
Seventeen, so you're going to add, no, you're going to make.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to do that because I, the, the policy committee moot, denied my request to discuss it thoroughly, and the will of the board was for us to discuss it and come back with something else, and we didn't do that. So I wanted to make sure that the board had a chance to hear that.
Okay.
We will, I'll put a note there, but we will hear that motion next week.
Twenty-three fifteen. I probably did, but it's twenty-three fifteen invocations.
Okay, very good, thank you, and thanks for giving us a heads up on that. Presentation of colors. Again, Ms. Bowie's not here, so we don't know what that is, but we'll find out next week. Who would like to do the pledge of allegiance? Sorry? Okay, Ms. Bradford.
Did you do it last month?
Probably.
Because I remember my name was still on there, so.
Put me down and then we'll still do it.
I can do it.
Ms. Mason, okay.
She did it last month.
Crossing that. We'll do the approval of the minutes, we'll have student voice, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay, very good. Teacher voice, recognitions, we've allotted twenty minutes. Dr. Barnes, recognitions, administrative introductions, classified employee recognition, recognitions and introductions. Does that sound about twenty minutes for you?
No, we will not have a classified employee recognition report this month, we just did that last month.
Okay.
And for administrative introductions, I only have one, so I can be in and out.
So maybe ten minutes, let's knock that down to ten minutes.
However, I know that he, my partner over here.
Yes.
We, we have a few recognitions coming from the comm department, as we do every month.
Okay, well, that'll be, that'll be letter C now, and we will, can we do it in ten minutes, you think, gentlemen? Total? Or we need fifteen? Ten, ten, okay.
Mr. Wildebohr?
Ms. Cravill?
We have A, recognitions, B, administrative introductions, C struck out, and D, recognitions and introductions. So is D necessary?
I don't. Mr. Cordella, do we need both?
I mean, they seem like that we just repeated it, so.
It seems like it's the same for me. Mr. Cordella? Do we need both A and now C?
We just need A and D from what I hear, from what I heard from them.
I don't know what the difference between those two are. We, we do the first one.
Okay.
A, so I'd say keep A.
So we'll cut it down to A and B.
So you just need A and B.
A and B. Superintendent's report is five minutes, sir? Good for that. My report is also five minutes, call away in sixty minutes. At that point, we'll have the election of board chair and vice chair, that's probably going to take, I would imagine, about ten minutes.
He did.
Let's say ten minutes for that, Ms. Cravill?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we'll take a short break, that'll be a five minute. Then consensus items. We've allotted five minutes for that. Take a moment to read through those, or I can read them through a bit. See if you have any questions about anything. Again, J, we'll vote when we go originally to vote, we'll vote everything except for J, and then we'll vote on J separately. Anybody have any questions? Ms. Cravill?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the, the specialty school calendars. We didn't have an attachment to look at, so I don't know if she's just going to present that at the meeting, or what.
Okay, Dr. Fates is here.
They should be attached shortly, I apologize, Ms. Cravill, but they will be attached before you leave this meeting, giving you time to look at that.
Okay. The, should I just keep one?
Please do.
So, letter F, the budget amendment, and this is kind of more towards Eddie in the budget part. When we are, I don't have any problem, you know, switching, doing the Legion Stadium, but I'm just wondering, what are the conditions of our underground storage tanks? Like, when were they last inspected? What were their conditions? How long were they expected to last? Can we really afford to do that? Afford meaning, you know, not money wise, but.
Well, the last inspection was good, there was no, no problem. The tanks, we did know that they're near and they're, it seemed that they were likely to expect them to leak. We did bid that project, we were seventy thousand dollars over budget, so we were going to have to back up and figure out a plan. So it's not impacting the schedule because we bid over budget. We'll just include that in our next year's capital budget.
Okay, and we can make it a year without, you don't think like there's no thin spots and things like that?
It's good.
Okay.
Ms. Walker?
So Ms. Cravill, I have a follow, I just had a question. Do we know if the county board either, they have approved the Legion Turk yet? Do we know if they've done that? I haven't seen one on the calendar.
I'm not positive, but I know it's, if it hasn't been voted on, it will be on the city council and county commissioners' agenda.
I imagine June or December. Maybe it'd be best if we asked them. No, we were, the last meeting, we were, we have to wait for them to approve it as well. They had to take it to their bodies, you know, group of people to let us know. They seem like it was a go, but they, they have to be approved first.
They have to get the thumbs up on that. Ms. Bradford had a point?
Two things. The ad hoc committee recommendations that we approved said that we would go through these items here so that when we get to next Tuesday, we would just vote to approve them. So if anybody had any objections or things they wanted to dig into or hear about, we'd do it in this meeting. And then when we recuse ourselves for, for example, Ms. Mason for Kate Fear, we, we do the recusal here, it's noted on the actual agenda. Ms. Mason's recused for this one, so that we don't have to repeat the whole mess and tell us about it, we approve it, they will vote, you know, just, we deal with it here.
Right, so we just need to note that J will be, you know, will be.
Yeah, but it goes right on to the budget.
Right.
Excuse me, the agenda.
To that point, when, when I've been watching the county commissioners' meetings, when they do that, when they have recusals, they say it at both meetings to make sure that everybody knows that you're just not sitting there going, I don't feel like it. Yeah.
And this, this particular one absolutely impacts my job, like it's the interpreting.
Right, this is your job, completely. But yeah, so I, I think, you know, that we should make that noted so everybody knows why that is, because we're not allowed to not vote on stuff.
Okay, Ms. Cravill?
So I have a question on letter K, learning perspectives.
Oh, that's J, and I had a question on that, too.
Oh, I'm on the wrong. I'm looking at the one I printed.
It's K.
It's K.
Whatever learning perspectives was.
JK.
The, so my que, after reading that, my question was, was this contract, was this an ESAR-funded initiative?
No.
Okay.
No, this is used with special education funds.
Okay, and then, so I was looking at the note at the bottom where it said transfer from PRC for nurses. So I'm not sure I understand what that means. Are we losing nurses, or?
No, with regard to this contract, I needed to extend it to provide the services for students, and I was finding any available funds within my budget to do so.
But we're not losing nurses in order to fund this?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I had a question on that one as well. So I saw that this was an increase, and I remember this was one of the first contracts that we approved as the new board, and there was an increase that we saw last year, but I think there was a concern of being able, for them to be able to contractally fulfill that. So are they able to fulfill this increase, what we're requesting? Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other going on? Okay, policies. Policy amendments. We've already mentioned, Ms. Cravill has mentioned possibly adding twenty-three fifteen, which we'll vote on next week.
And I had another, one of the things that is showing up that we will be voting on is policy forty-three hundred. And again, I don't know, that was a little bit of a contentious topic of discussion, and it was moved forward two to one, even though I felt that it didn't have the support of our staff and our superintendent and at least one member on the committee. So I, I'm not certain that it is productive for us to send it back one more time to have the same discussion again. But I did want to, so I would like to pull that one out. I'm going to suggest that we pull that one out for discussion, or I'm going to suggest that we take it out and send it back to committee. So I just wanted some board.
You said forty-three hundred, right?
This is forty-three hundred.
Okay, very good.
So I don't know how, I don't know how we're going to address that. I mean, do you want me to just, would I talk about it again at the board meeting?
When we get to there, we'll pull that one out, and we can discuss it.
I don't know if we need to pull forty-seven twenty, but I did have some questions about forty-seven twenty, and I watched the policy meeting, if it's all right, may I ask them at this point? This is the time, right? So I don't recall seeing a huge discussion about the forty-seven twenty survey of students, but I noticed that the red, it talks about the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Youth Risk Behavior Surveillance System, and that that is one that now parents have to opt out of. Was that, is that a requirement that we have to have that, or is that a?
Warner?
Yes, that was an addition in a revision to the Parents' Bill of Rights. Initially, it said opting into all surveys, but then it clarified for youth risk behavior survey and the youth tobacco survey that are put out by the U.S. Department of Education, that those would be opt out instead of opt in.
Do we know why?
Because of the overall benefit to understanding trends of use or trends of our student activities, and then federal funding allocations for programs to address them.
I ask because I went and looked at some of these surveys, and they definitely cover some of the protected topics that we have in there, so I was just trying to see if this was something that we were required to have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? If we're going to pull two things off the policy, I would prefer that we discuss them here rather than drag on meeting out next week to, you know, to, to blow everything we've created in terms of meeting time schedules. We have a policy committee, things go to the policy committee. We went almost two hours, we discussed it. Just because one board member doesn't like the results, I don't see that the whole board has to discuss it again and again and again. And if we're going to discuss it, let's discuss it now. Instead of, you know, just tying up everybody's time. I mean, why do we have a policy committee if we continue to ignore the policy committee recommendations?
Well, what's the will of the board? Let's, let's say, let's go ahead, we can discuss policy forty-three hundred, and we still need to go through twenty-three fifteen next week. Ma'am?
Well, I would, I would like to have some response, some of the actually. Not, not all of us are on all the committees, not all of us watch them. I did watch this one, however, I was not happy when I watched it. But at the same time, I feel like we should always be able to talk about policy if we need to or want to. Should there be other things that, you know, we can think of between now and then? We shouldn't cut off our opportunity to talk about policy anytime, and that is when we pass them. So I feel like it's appropriate to keep it that way. I mean, we can talk about it now, but we can still pull it, any, any one of us can do that. That's, that's our privilege to do, so.
Well, Ms. McManus?
Correct me if I'm wrong, in other words, my understanding of the policy committee is that they passed what they would like to carry to recommend to us, the school board, that is not a finality, and then that's why we discussed it.
Ms. Bradford? Others?
Yeah, and I was going to reiterate that point, that when, one of the comments, you know, that we just heard was that we don't want to waste our time, and we don't want to spend too much time. Well, that was one of the only ones in policy committee that went way over its time. And nobody called point of order because the discussion was good, and we needed to keep having that discussion, and we did. And in the end, it was, the conversation was shut down and a vote two to one. And I just, all I'm doing is trying to call to the attention of my colleagues that this, if you didn't watch the meeting, go back and watch it, or this is a time for us to discuss it as a group. You know, the recommendation was bring it forward, and all I'm doing is calling attention. And the board can say, Cravill, you know, you were, you were outvoted, we're good. Or they can say, thank you, Ms. Cravill, I would like to talk about it. You know, so those are our options, that's why I'm suggesting.
And I would like to add to the conversation, you know, and I hear from both sides, but I also think it is important, we're going to vote on it next week. So why don't we discuss it next week versus we discuss it now and then we'll vote on it next week? Why don't we discuss it, vote on it one time, so that is, you know, we have it here, and then it'll be brought up again next week for another discussion? So, but let's, we have a, a motion to.
I didn't make a motion.
No motion, okay, all right, we'll, we'll just carry on, we're going to pull forty-three hundred next week, and there'll be.
No, we're going to have somebody make a motion to.
Motion to, yes, that's true. Okay.
And then also, Mr. Wildebohr, there is no time allotted to this, and so I would like to.
I think we need, yeah, obviously, at least twenty minutes. I think twenty minutes, what do you think, Ms. Cravill?
Well, I would defer to our policy committee chair on, she was there at the meeting and, it's her committee, so I can proffer a time or she can proffer a time.
Ms. Barnhart?
I mean, I think twenty minutes is plenty. The reality is there are some things that this board is going to be a split decision vote on, and it does not mean that we shouldn't take a vote on it. And so, things have been discussed in detail, and if it's the will of the board to pass them or as is, or to make adjustments, then that's what will happen.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much, we'll give it twenty minutes. Get myself back on, on the spot here. We have nothing under new business.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
At our last agenda meeting, we had had a discussion about the EDI committee, and in that discussion, we had talked about keeping it on the agenda for December, nope, sorry, November, and making it a discussion point rather than an actionable item. That was turned down, and we then voted to move it to this meeting, under new business. And so I would like to see that reflected in the, in the agenda.
Okay, and I did talk to Ms. Barnhart, she did not recall that, and I did not recall that, so.
I watched the video.
Did you?
It'd be in the minutes, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I actually asked Ms. Bowie, and she didn't have it either, but it's, she's not here.
The agenda was updated to reflect the twenty-four point on budget calendar from new business?
Okay. Okay, very good. I'm sorry? Apologize?
No, that's okay. I was just saying, I just noticed that myself, it looks like on the printout, the budget calendar was under consent, but it appears in assembly is under new business. Perhaps because we don't have to, it doesn't actually require a vote, could be why it got moved.
Okay.
Under new business. But I'm glad to answer any questions, if there's any questions related to the calendar, when we get to that.
Is that the best place for it? I mean, so we just need to move it there if we need to?
I think that is, because there, it doesn't require a vote, it's just for information, so I think that is the proper place.
It just popped up, I agree.
Yeah, it just popped up, okay. Well, let's go back to Ms. Mason's discussion, what's the will of the board? I mean, that's, so if we voted to do it, then we should do it, and she's, you know, and I believe she went back and looked, so.
Because we could easily look at it ourselves, and.
It was a four-three vote.
No, I believe it.
It was a four-three vote.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Walker?
Well, okay, that's fair. I guess I would want to know, since we're here talking about it, we've got it on the agenda here for today's meeting for discussion on the information. If we're going to move it to an actionable item in December, I would like to be clear on what we're talking about and what potentially we're taking action on, because according to the last description, the district representatives will provide an update about the strategic plan, EDI goals, definitions, and committee, and how they are to be aligned to the subgroup demographics that are submitted at both the federal and state levels. Potential to update strategic plan goals to be approved by the board, as well as update EDI definitions in committee. Doesn't say anything about taking a vote to remove the committee, get rid of the committee, or anything like that. To me, this looks like this is, staff is going to give us some information. So I would like to be very clear about what we're putting it on the agenda for in December.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, too, of, of my committee member, just to say, because I had tried to put a detail to what the discussion that I was sharing, the demographic subgroups, and making sure the alignment, and then the discussion was postponed. So if it gets on the agenda, I don't know if Ms. Mason has a separate idea of having the discussion that I intended from last month, or if there's other things that she wants to consider.
And so, I'm trying to wrap my, my brain around all this.
Me, too.
So the, the discussion we had last month was what you just read. And then you said that it was supposed to be talked about this month, and so that's what you'd like to have add, is what she read.
Can you read it again, Ms. Walker?
Sure. It says, "District representatives will provide an update about the strategic plan, EDI goals, definitions, and committee, and how they are to be aligned to the subgroup demographics that are submitted at both federal and state levels. Potential to update strategic plan goals to be approved by the board, as well as an update EDI definitions and committee."
I would say not completely. I think we need to analyze the strategic goals, as well as the, the progress that the committee has made, and consider dissolving the committee. That would be the motion that I would be making.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Cravill?
So I think it behooves us to understand that EDI is not just talking about our students, that our strategic goal also talks about recruiting and retaining and valuing our employees. So if we're just removing the EDI committee because we don't like the demographics of the students that it is intended to serve, then we need to rethink that as well.
And we have, you know, a big discussion, and, you know, which is planned later on in this meeting. But we just need to decide whether we want to, I mean, to my way of thinking, we have the, what was planned there, which we voted on last month, which is what we should.
We should be talking about the same thing, unless the person who did it retracts that.
Can the committee chair repeat what she said a few minutes ago? So I can absorb it.
She said dissolve the committee, that's what she said.
I would like to look at the strategic plan goals, look at the efficacy of the committee, and discuss dissolving the committee.
So you would like us to do that in the December meeting, or you would like us to do it now?
In the December meeting. I don't want to throw it now because I want to be able to have a discussion. I want, I didn't want to blindside anybody, I wanted to make sure that we all had the ability to prepare.
Ms. McManus?
My understanding is you said to dissolve the committee.
Yes, sir.
Ma'am? There's no doubt we have. There's no doubt we have some board members, at least four, who ran to do away with EDI. Obviously, that's going to happen, as well stated. I've talked to two of the four board members and asked if we could come up with a different description to maintain. I'd like to remind everyone that the county commissioners, which I've read, and I'd like to read again, I'll make 30 seconds. Every single time they have a meeting, they hand out this form, and on the back it says, "Mission," it talks about equitable opportunities, "vision," "diverse," "prosperous," "committed" for all future generations, and core values, equity. So, I'm hearing you and others say, that as the school board, that is financed by the county commissioners, and the state of North Carolina, and the Feds, and specific to your ends, we're going to do away with those words because you don't like the words, but the county commissioners have kept it. All I ask is you explain that to me. That doesn't bode well with anyone with average intelligence. I just can't believe it. If you don't like the words, come up with different words. It deals with exceptional children, it deals with handicapped, severe, it deals with so much more, but you're trying to make it a black-white issue. And that's exactly what we're dealing with. But I don't have the votes, but I get to speak. I think that you're hurting the school board. I know you disagree, but I think that you're hurting the school board. And I think, I'm surprised county commissioners haven't said something, but we'll see. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Walker?
I think the biggest, well, besides what has been stated before, problem I have is this, this has not even been brought to the EDI committee themselves. These folks have been on this committee, some of them for a while, some not, but show up all the time because they care about our students. To not even address the committee themselves and have this discussion and just go ahead and dissolve it. I mean, there was a tentative meeting, now there's a scheduled meeting. I don't know what that meeting would be about now, except to just say, hey, we're done. I don't know. I think it's a very rude thing to do to them as human beings, as people that show up because they really care. And as a person, I would, I want to speak for Mr. McManus, but as a person that's been the chair and been on EDI for now three years, I think it's very heartbreaking to think that we're at this moment right now where politics is dictating what we do. And I think it's just a very rude thing to do to people. And also, I think it takes the, there are off the wall of what the mission was of this county, but also, to Ms. Crable's point, it's not just about students, it's about staff as well. And it is a pillar of our strategic plan. Is that what's next? I don't want that to be next, because that strategic plan, we worked very hard on, it was a very thorough thing that we did, and it's something that we rank pretty decently high every year. It's at least third or fourth. So, I'm protesting pretty hard on it. I think this was the original discussion we were supposed to have, and I think we should stay with the original discussion.
This may be followed up with changing our strategic plan.
It would have to be, yeah.
And if I might, I had the opportunity to attend some social gatherings over the holiday time, and unsolicited, I had people talking to me about the school, and the strategic plan came up like three times on how well we did in executing our strategic plan, how thorough we were, the steps that we went through. And I didn't even think that many people were paying attention, but our community members are paying attention to that. And they, a lot of people are in support of the strategic plan that we have now, and we have a lot of work to do. If we're just hacking things out, then we have a lot of work to do in reorganizing, redoing, revising our strategic plan before we get into budget discussions, which are right around the corner. In fact, one of the things on the finance committee, I'm looking at and supposing where some of the money would be coming from in one of the agenda items. So, it's, I just think we got the cart before the horse, or whatever, yeah, the cart before the horse, in that, so...
Well, and I would like to ask the board, because we actually have a, it was H, now it's G, you know, the equity, diversity, inclusion discussion. Do we want to continue the discussion at this point, or do we want to have a separate discussion at that point about that? I mean, I don't know if it's worthwhile.
You're talking about my, that you put on for me?
Yes, yes, sir.
Sounds like to me we don't need to discuss it anymore.
Well, we're back to the point, though, is what Ms. Walker read was what we had agreed four to three last month to put on as a discussion. If we want to amend that to, but it is going to be under new business, so, we could, you know, there could be a motion made at that point. So, I mean, I guess we, I'm going to believe Ms. Mason, that she went back and, you know, anybody else can go watch it, too, but if that was there, then...
I kind of remember it. I kind of remember it.
Okay.
I do remember it, because that was the vote where we hustled along with the wrong numbers, if I remember.
No, that was Title IX.
Oh, Title IX, okay.
All right, well, so then we will ask Ms. Bowie to add that to the discussion for next week.
Under new business?
Under new business, yes, ma'am.
And so, what kind of timing should we give that?
I bet, I'm saying, I would say 20 minutes at least, again.
Mr. Board of Board?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we add on here the words Ms. Mason said, dissolve the committee? I think everybody needs to see that. Because why are we having any other discussion at all if we're just going to dissolve the committee?
Well...
I mean, we're going to discuss it, but I mean, all this stuff that's on here, I mean, I thought this was brought in good faith to have an actual discussion about what we were going to do. But this seems to me like, if the ends are just to dissolve it...
Well, that's when board members, a board member does have the right to make that motion, whether that passes.
Well, yeah, but I mean, let's be clear about, why don't put potential or vote to dissolve, potentially, on there?
We could put that on there, sure.
Let's just be clear, and let's let people know what we're planning on doing, if that's not been clear.
Okay. And we can add that possible vote to dissolve, or we'll look at it. You know, Mr. McManus can also make a counter motion like he did before, or maybe we come up with another name, in a different way, a little different direction.
I think anyone who's listening can figure out where we are, and where we aren't, and where we're going.
That's terrible. It's against policy, too.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry, quick question. So, at this point, what would be the expectation for the EDI committee? Because we are meeting this coming Monday.
We can discuss.
Let's have it done.
Yeah, we can discuss what the possibilities are. I have a whole, like, write-up, and if you need, I can lead that meeting.
Okay.
So, can I ask a question to that point? Is this conversation being led by the chair of the EDI committee, or by the three board members that comprise that?
Just the chair. I do not speak for the other two board members, very clearly.
Well, I can repeat, would you share with me? But I won't.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, we're going to carry on.
Do we need to, sorry, do we need to look at the strategic plan prior to coming to this meeting, because the, and so that we can see very clearly where the committee fits into our strategic plan work? Is that something that we should take with us as homework, to make sure that we've read that and we can have a thorough discussion, or is that something you're going to bring forward?
I mean, I can tell you exactly, the one goal that was tasked to the committee on the strategic plan was Goal 4.1.1, tactic two. And it was to build out system-wide shared language definition of equity.
When was that?
That's the strategic plan.
Two years ago?
Yeah, two years ago.
That we adopted, I think, in June of 20...
Twenty-two. It would be 22.
Yeah.
Because it was 22 to, it's 22 to 27.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
A point of information, don't we in January review the strategic plan and make our little marks on the board?
We do.
And so on? Okay, thank you.
That's true. Okay, carrying on, we have no old business?
That's actually, that's not reviewing it, that's when we're doing budgeting.
Right. Yes, sir.
Prioritizing.
So, it's prioritizing the budget.
Prioritizing, yes, sir.
Prioritizing.
Thank you for that reference.
For spending.
Before we move on...
Yes, ma'am.
Could I make a suggestion that before we get our panties in too much of a wad here, should we not have, like, those are my technical terms, apologies, should we not perhaps have a work session to really talk about this, and maybe invite the EDI committee to talk with us, to invite our staff to talk with us, maybe, you know, Dr. Faus can weigh in on how, even though it's not a, in our pillar perhaps, it's my, when I read the strategic plan, it's woven into the work that you all do every day. I mean, it's not just one line, 4.1.1, number two, that we can strike out. It's like the whole fabric of what we do. You know, everybody's got a little mini, and maybe I'm wrong, but I thought that every department had a little fabric of that in their own interpersonal goals, you know, not interpersonal, interdepartmental goals. So, to strike out, it's just like taking out three words out of Policy 4300. You know, what does that really mean? What are the unintentional consequences of us doing that? And if you think 20 minutes is going to be enough for each person in this room to give an opinion, or to give a statement on the validity of yes or no, and then are we going to allow our staff to weigh in on theirs? I mean, 20 minutes is not enough. Seven times two minutes each is 14. And then we, and that's for, I'm just saying, we each get two minutes to say something. That has no discussion involved.
Well, I mean, two minutes each, we could add, we could go up to 30 minutes if we need to. I did some research, because, you know, I saw this whole thing coming up. And, you know, if you look at it, Pender, and not saying we have to do what Pender County does, nor do we have to do what Brunswick County does, but neither of them have an EDI committee at all. So, they have it woven into a lot of the other pieces of what they do without having a separate committee to handle that. I'm not saying that's right or wrong. Again, not saying we have to follow any other county's thing, but it's kind of like you brought up, you know, neither of those counties have Title IX. So, a Title IX committee, obviously, they cover it in some other form or fashion. So, you know, I have no problem in moving it up to, let's say, 30 minutes, to give it a fair amount of time. If there's a board member that would like to make a motion that we table the discussion to a, or postpone...
Postpone.
Postpone, excuse me, thank you, to a work session, we can hear that and vote on that. Okay, let's say 30 minutes.
Hugh's mouth is going open. Are you going to raise your hand? You're just breathing, okay.
It's, this is, I'm being nice, I'm really proud of myself.
No, I'm...
Thank you.
And that's...
This has been, this was, the last election, the new board members ran specifically and have been reminded from the audience with the shout-outs, and also in the paper I read from the GOP. They weren't doing what they were elected to do.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. This is getting personal. This is, and this is insinuating on our attitudes and so on.
Have I mentioned your name? Point of order? I have not mentioned your name.
Okay.
That's right.
All right, we have a point of order. Let me read on that real quickly. The chair rules, that is not well taken. Please continue, Ms. McManus. Please continue, Ms. McManus.
Bless your heart, thank you.
Bless my heart.
So, long story short, this has been in the making during all of that time. It's not going to change. They're not going to change their vote.
Okay.
And I will have to admit, sometimes, but I tell you what we could do. The teachers can still continue to treat and to talk and to create an atmosphere for what this committee's stood for.
Ms. Walker?
That's the last thing I'll say, just, I don't care if you point of order, this is damaging our school district, just to let you know that. All these discussions, that policy committee meeting, it's damaging.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll allow 30 minutes, Ms. Crable, for that, carrying on to, we have no old business, correspondence, so we are, then we have a closed session, which I don't believe we will need, and adjournment. So, Ms. Crable, about, how long do we have on that?
180 minutes, so divided by 63 hours.
That's right, 3 hours.
On the announcements, it says, and this may be old and hasn't been changed, what time is the finance committee on the fourth?
I can't, I didn't hear the question. 10 o'clock.
It's at 10?
Yeah, it's at 10.
Okay.
That was a typo, that somebody's correcting.
All right, let me draw my other sheet here. Here's what I need. So, we're going to cancel the H2. All right, at this point, that ends the discussion of agenda items. We now need to move into a closed session. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11C for the following purposes. Event disclosure of information is privileged or confidential pursuant to General Statute 115C-402 and not considered public record, but within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes, consult the, with an attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the board. Three, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, conditions of initial appointment, excuse me, of initial employment of an individual employed or considered for employment within the school's district, or to hear investigative complaint, charge, grievance by or against any individual employee. To consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual employed or considered for employment within the school system, and to hear investigative complaint. I guess that's the same thing, it is, okay. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There are first and second, any discussion? If not all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed? We are in a closed session.
Sir?
Oh, okay. We can start then. We're back in open session. Welcome back, everyone. We are now on to our consensus item. We need a motion to accept the personnel report.
So moved.
We have a motion to accept. This is our second.
Second.
First and second in discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passes seven zero. We move on to information. Exploring opportunities for newcomers. Doctor Fason, please step on up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. And I am excited to talk to you about something that we are truly exploring. And that is, what are some options to better serve our newcomers in our district? And I'll just take a few minutes to kind of give you an insight of what we are looking at and what we've done and some things, some of our next steps.
Could you just, for the people who are listening, define what newcomers is?
I will, in a slide. Second.
Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry. I will get there. So first, and I hope you can see this slide. It looks like, oh, yeah. All right. So first what we have is, we have a list of our multi-learners broken down. So when you're talking about our English as a second language is what a lot of us have frequently used that terminology. About two years ago, our state actually changed the language to multilingual learners, or multilingual learners. And we have here the number of those learners broken out by the year they were in the country. So this is the year they're in the country. And I want you to focus on year one here. And you're going to see why in just a moment. You see, this is the current year. So you see currently, we have 504 students who just joined us. And then you see that there are 192 of those students in grades one, I mean, 192 of those students in grades three through 11. And that's going to be important in just a moment. So in the next slide, what are newcomers? What do we mean? And basically, our newcomers are students who are just arriving to our country. And for the sake of what we are looking to do, we are looking at students who are not only just arriving to the country, but they are also assessed on our WEDA assessment, which is an assessment we give students when they speak English as a second language. And these are students who score a level one and level two. So we are looking at taking something, looking at a way to provide a newcomer center, a newcomer school for these students. So if you go back to the previous slide, you see that those are 192 students. Of the year one students, those are the students that are in grades three through 11. You could have some students, as you see from our slide on the target population, and I won't read that to you, but you could have some students who score a level one or two who are not in year one. Whereas you could have some students who score a higher level who are not in year one. So what we would like to do is, we would like to focus on the population of our newcomer students, new to our country, new to the English language acquisition. Based on our WEDA assessment, and this is a national assessment, based on our WEDA assessment, to have a school that we can have them focus on getting used to just doing school in America, getting used to the language and the social aspect. And, next slide, please. So I told you that basically, when we look at our year one students, we're looking at about 192 students because we're not looking at kindergarten, first and second grade. Those students are already going to be so engrossed in language, it's the same thing. We do that so much with students who are already in our kindergarten. So we're looking at starting in that third grade and go through the 11th. Why do you not do the 12th grade? Students will not be able to graduate from here. This is not a center of people, this would not be a school where people come to stay. Okay? This is a place, remember, they come to get adjusted, learn some language skills, and then we transition them back to their home school. So this is the numbers per grade. So let me give you the next slide. Next slide, please. So what have we done? We have first examined the district needs.
Sir? Oh, okay, we can start then. We're back in open session, welcome back everyone. We are now on to our consensus item. We need a motion to accept the personnel report.
So moved.
We have a motion to accept, is there a second?
Second.
First and second in discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes seven zero. We move on to information, exploring opportunities for newcomers. Doctor Fason, please step on up. Thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. And I am excited to talk to you about something that we are truly exploring. And that is, what are some options to better serve our newcomers in our district? And I'll just take a few minutes to kind of give you an insight of what we are looking at and what we've done and some things, some of our next steps.
Could you just, for the people who are listening, define what newcomers is?
I will, in a slide, second.
Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry, I will get there. So first, and I hope you can see this slide, I, it looks like, oh, yeah. Alright, so first what we have is, we have a list of our multi-learners broken down. So when you're talking about our English as a second language is what a lot of us have frequently used that terminology. About two years ago, our state actually changed the language to multilingual, multi-language learners, or multilingual learners. And we have here the number of those learners broken out by the year they were in the country. So this is the year they're in the country. And I want you to focus on year one here, and you're going to see why in just a moment. You see, this is the current year, so you see currently we have 504 students who just joined us. And then you see that there are 192 of those students in grades one, I mean, 192 of those students in grades three through 11. And that's going to be important in just a moment. So in the next slide, what are newcomers? What do we mean? And basically, our newcomers are students who are just arriving to our country. And for the sake of what we are looking to do, we are looking at students who are not only just arriving to the country, but they are also assessed on our WEDA assessment, which is an assessment we give students when they speak English as a second language. And these are students who score a level one and level two. So we are looking at, taking something, looking at a way to provide a newcomer center, a newcomer school for these students. So if you go back to the previous slide, you see that those are 192 students. Of the year one students, those are the students that are in grades three through 11. You could have some students, as you see from our slide on the target population, and I won't read that to you, but you could have some students who score a level one or two who are not in year one. Whereas you could have some students who score a higher level who are not in year one. So what we would like to do is, we would like to focus on the population of our newcomer students, new to our country, new to the language, the English language acquisition, based on our WEDA assessment, and this is a national assessment, based on our WEDA assessment, to have a school that we can have them focus on getting used to just doing school in America, getting used to the language and the social aspect. And, next slide please. So I told you that basically, when we look at our year one students, we're looking at about 192 students, because we're not looking at kindergarten, first and second grade. Those students are already going to be so engrossed in language, it's the same thing. We do that so much with students who are already in our kindergarten. So we're looking at starting in that third grade and go through the 11th. Why do you not do the 12th grade? Students will not be able to graduate from here. This is not a center of people, this would not be a school where people come to stay. Okay? This is a place, remember, they come to get adjusted, learn some language skills, and then we transition, transition them back to their home school. So this is the numbers per grade. So let me give you the next slide, next slide please. So what have we done? We have first, examined the district needs, brainstormed about ideas and best practices, and we created a committee, and then we shared some information with you. That's the first steps that we've done. Then October the 27th, we actually analyzed some data and looked at some next steps. A couple of weeks ago, a team actually went to Guilford to visit one of their newcomer center. They actually have two newcomer schools. And I, I keep interchanging between newcomer center and newcomer schools, and let me explain the difference between the two. Because everything that I'm saying here is contingent on a request of funding ask. So this is not something we can do, or we do not get additional funding for that. So let me say that. So there are different models. The best model, talking to those who have models and looking at the research, is the newcomer school. Where you actually have a facility where you house and actually educate these students together, provide parental wraparound support services. So it's just not about the students receiving support. You also will be helping the families in this center as well. And that is, when you have a school, when you have a center, there are some models where people take maybe a hallway of a current school in different places, and they do that within the school. So usually when a person, or when a district does not have facilities, that is where they go, is to maybe a center model. It's not the best model, but it is better to service them and actually allow them to get engrossed in the language and in the culture, and expose them together for that first year, than to just do what we're currently doing. And we have no set model where they have any special support, and that's what we want to do now. So, we went to Guilford, when the team went to Guilford and looked at the school, we actually then walked and looked at Mosley. Mosley would be an ideal facility to utilize for this newcomer school. We would, it would limit a lot of the cost that we currently would need if we didn't use, because the facility is already there. And then you see the next steps that we have, that we were going to do. We need to talk to some stakeholders, and we're going to hold some forums. We actually want to continue to do the process, and till we, we're going to keep, continue to work with the goals that we're going to get the ask. We don't know the ask, because a lot of the ask will be dictated on staffing, and that is part of the process we're in now. So just to be clear, we would, are exploring to set up a newcomer school to support our students who are new to the country and new to the English language. And I'll take any questions.
Actually, I have a question for Mr. Anderson. Has there been any look at, you know, because obviously it would draw from all the county, bussing, you know, you're going to have 12th or 11th graders on a bus with a 3rd grader. You know, that's, to me, somewhat concerning too.
We have talked about that. It would be bussing from all over the county, but that's what we do currently at most, at mostly, with pre-K and the career readiness academy. If we did have elementary and secondary students on the same bus, we reserve the front seats and separate those students.
Okay, others?
Did we look in, or are we looking into the option with Gregory? Because they already have the dual immersion program, and seeing that, I just, I feel like the staffing capability, we'd be able to tap into their expertise potentially. And so I don't know if that's something that we've considered, but to look into it, I think we should.
We did talk about Mosley, not because of the staffing, because what we want to do is engross them into the English language. So we, and it would definitely benefit them to have people who speak the Spanish language. But we want to make sure that this is just not a place for the students, but it's also a place for their parents as well. And it just seems that Mosley would be a better space than currently Gregory would offer. But that would be, that was definitely something that was brought to the table.
Ms. Cravill?
So I had a couple of questions that came, that come to mind. One, well, this isn't even a question, this is something that I recall hearing at my task force meeting that I was invited to.
That's what I was going to say.
That several of the principals said that they would, would be interested in hosting that and leading that. So that was, you know, we're listening, you know, that, and it came up from the bubble, bubbling up. But another question that I had was, are families going to be forced, not forced, but required to go there? I mean, that they would, you would, when they're enrolling, you would tell them about it, and they could choose to go there, any, any of their children, like from any age, you know, from three to 11?
Yeah, that's a very good point, two very good points, Ms. Cravill, because actually, this has definitely come from our principals. They have asked for supporting this area, and then going back to families, if they, parents have the option. I can tell you what we find, and when I talk to my counterparts, most of the parents take advantage of this option. It is, it allows the students to first go and build a community and get adjusted without the bigger settings that sometimes we have.
Can I do a follow-up to that, along the same lines?
Go ahead.
So they, they opt in, and then is there an assessment process, not assessment, but is there a follow-up process that if family says, okay, I think Stephanie's good to go, you know, back into her school? Would it, would it be like a whole year commitment, or would it be a semester by semester commitment? How, how, how are we, or have we got that far yet?
We haven't got that far, but we have had conversations about that part. So I'll tell you that first and foremost, we do not want anyone to stay more than a year. It is about adjustment. You do have places where they stay a year and a half. There might be a time where we, you know, but our goal is a year. They will have an assessment to, to actually determine if this is a space for them. We would also look if we have students who don't need a year. So it's, it's, it can go in and out. And keep in mind, you have some students who transition in November, some students who transition in January. So we don't have to do August to August, we're going to look at what's best for these students, and, because we're trying to support them for that year in time.
Ms. Walker?
Thank you. Well, I would agree with you, I'd written that down, because that's something we did hear in task force meeting, the need for some kind of center, or what do they call it?
Newcomer center.
Well, I thought it was something a little different, that's fine. So the next steps, are y'all thinking about the threshold for transitioning? Like, do they need to pass some certain kind of English, like, you know, to be able to get them back into mainstream school? If they go to the newcomers, are you thinking about them understanding at a certain level?
Well, we have a certain, we, with the OCR, Office of Civil Rights, we cannot keep them a certain amount of time. Our goal is to make sure that year is what we're going to aim for. Like I said, you can do, in certain places, they do a year and a half. We are looking at a year, because our goal is to get them adjusted, to help them and to get them back in with the rest of their peers, and to really, to be able to take some of the advantages of the great educational system that we have.
So a follow-up. My name is your chair, is the, the parents, because I know a lot of feedback I've heard is that they need some help as well. And I, I mean, obviously, I don't know what that looks like yet, until you do your, do your research here, but will they, will, are you all keeping that in mind? Is that part of the school in Guilford County?
Yes, well, I can't speak, I was actually sick during their visit, but I can tell you that Julie and her team, and Julie and I are working closely, because part of this, we actually will have what we're calling a newcomer center for parents, and that would be a room where we want to make sure we can help parents access some of the things that they need to access. So Julie's already working with the wraparound services that would be needed there. So this is just not an academic endeavor, this is a, a total endeavor strongly with student support. They are hand in hand with us on this, as they need to be.
Ms. Mason?
So you were talking about utilizing possibly mostly.
Yes.
My question is kind of a dual question. We currently have students and staff that are there, what would occur with those particular individuals, the students and the staff?
Okay, so I'll speak to the students, and I'll let Dr. Barnes speak with the staff. But currently, we have about 68 to 70 high school students at Mosley. It could fluctuate time to time, but that's on average, we have about 70. We are working, we're going to be notifying their, the students, the parents have already been spoken, I mean, I'm sorry, the teachers have already met with Dr. Barnes. We're going to be laying out a process for parents, because one of the things that we've heard about our students at Mosley is, they love the small space environment. So we will be working and working with our small space schools, our other specialty schools, to see if that is an option. If not, we're going to be working with transition plans, and not just throw them back into whatever their school would be. So we're really looking at that, and I can tell you, those teachers, that has been the biggest question and concern from the teachers at Mosley, not about them, but about their students and the students they serve, which says a lot about them.
Dr. Barnes, would you want to speak to the teachers?
Ms. Mason, your second question.
And to forestall the emails or phone calls, this is currently theoretical, not an actual. However, you know, we have been able, through the S O reductions and things like that, no employee who works with our district, who is in good standing and wants to stay with our district, everyone will have a home. So usually HR works individually with folks, where if we have a situation like this happen, we would find those people homes throughout the district in places they're comfortable with.
And then, sort of a follow-up, as far as new hires, we're looking at, you're talking about newcomers, and I know that we primarily focus on Spanish speaking. How would we accommodate those who are not Spanish speaking?
So when you think about the newcomer school, I want you to think about, our goal is to help them acquisition, get acquainted and use the English language. Of course, we're going to have to support them in those, so we'll do the same things we're doing now. So think about, right now, we have a high Portuguese, Arabic, right? We go to Spanish first, because it is our highest. But what we're trying to do now is, we're spreading all those resources across all of our schools. What we're saying here is, we'll bring that in, be able to support those students at a higher level, and support their families. Because we know the power of pairing with their families and giving them resources as well.
Ms. Rafferty?
Um, two questions as well. The first one to do with the numbers, if I add those four years, so if I'm right, we've had 1,505 new students in the last four years that are multilingual, am I correct?
I have not added that, but have you done that?
I did it on the calculator, so there's a good chance it's, it's right. How long had, well, the second part to that is, is, do you have any, did you guys do any projections on where we're going to be in four more years? Have you looked at that?
So that is the question then, because keep in mind, these are the newcomers we currently have, the thing that we can tell you is our numbers are increasing.
Yeah.
So we don't think that the numbers are going to go down, we think the numbers are going to remain the same and maybe tip some.
So when you went to Guilford, how long have they been doing their school?
Guilford is one of the first in our state, probably one of the first in the nation, they were doing, they, they've been doing this for at least 10 years.
And did they say where their funding's coming from? So we have to find a funding stream, so what are they doing?
So the funding is our, it's the school. We already have ML teachers, mostly it's a school. So we, part of it is local funds, we would look to say if this is something that's wanting to be supported, that's what we have to do. It's only supported if that, the T P Y A students will still be there, and our preschool students will still be there. What's, will be removed are the 60, 70 kids who are like, it's almost like satellite schools.
I think I misunderstood, you said, we have to do the ask. What did you mean when you said that? I thought the ask was for money.
Well, we will be having to do, there will be some additional funding, but a lot of the funding, a lot of the staff, we hope, and, and that's why I say, we're giving you an overview, there's so many, we're exploring, we just want it, everybody to, we want to be transparent. So we, we are, we don't know what the ask will be. We are, we do know that there's not going to be a direct trade, staff for staff, like we have some of our ML teachers right now in our schools, and some of them, we might could utilize to support this, but we're looking, we'll be looking for students, teachers who have certain criteria. I mean, there are certain things, this is laid out and done across the nation, and also for dual certification, so there will be an ask for some funding.
Okay.
We have no idea, but to say that there would be no ask would be unrealistic.
And by the way, congratulations, this is fabulous.
And I hate to cut the conversation short, but we were well over our 10-minute allotment, and we also have our folks that have showed up for the advanced placement courses, so I'd like to see if we can pull them up, with the indulgence of the board, if we can go to aye.
So we have, are we going to modify the agenda, do we have to take a vote to do that?
We can do that. With the indulgence of the board, I'll make a motion that we allow the advanced placement teachers that are here to speak at this time. Is there a second?
Second.
First and second?
Are they all here?
Yeah, I think they are.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're going to need just to take a quick break, because we need to set them up, because this is more of a roundtable discussion, and we're going to have to bring the teachers and have them sit up where we're sitting, and we're going to step back and give them the opportunity, because they want to join and have some questions for you, and you, I think you have some questions for them. So if you will give us just a minute to make some adoptions to the room?
Why don't we, why don't we carry on, board members, why don't we carry on with testing day concerns while they set up? Ms. McManus, you brought that up.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it. First, I, I don't think I'm going to take all this time, being close to it. What I want to share with you is, I think we need to look at putting in our work session to discuss, so that the students in our community and our staff know that we're listening to them, and that we all want to discuss it. The first was testing days. We've heard so many unfortunate situations about the testing days. I defend the principals, I, it is, you've got so many people that have to be in the presence of testing. You've got upperclassmen who are taking testing subjects, as are licensed interpreters as a rule, then it's impossible for you to give them instruction. So what I would like to do, is for us to talk in a work session, about offering alternatives to those students, such that they can go off campus, and they can do school, lots of volunteering. And I've contacted one of the, lead two of them in the county, which I'm talking to about, helping myself out, which I think they can do. But why don't we let the kids volunteer to go to some of the elementary schools for literacy? You know, have any, I won't go through and take you 20 minutes, I'm, sir, you don't have any volunteer organizations, if they knew ahead, if they knew ahead of time, how many kids could go in and help them? That is educational. We can even give them work to take home, but I'm, what I'm trying to say is, let's listen to these kids, at least give them an opportunity, so that we don't waste their day. Number two, the summer school.
Well, hold on, does anybody have any else, any, any thoughts about that?
That's fantastic.
I, I mean, I love the idea, I just have a question, the legality of the checkbox of attendance, because I, because I had asked the question, are we allowed to, let's say, let's have a field day? And I, it's on my understanding, we're not allowed to have that flexibility, so if we are allowed to give the flexibility of say, yes, you can, if you volunteer, you're able to be off campus, but I don't know if we're legally allowed to. So if we are, I'm, I'm all for it, but I don't know if we are.
Does, does, does a field trip count as an educational day?
In order to do a field trip, you have to have everyone sign off, there has to be a teacher to oversee it. Someone has to oversee it, that just can't say go on field trip.
Well, at the time of brevity, if we could discuss, I'd like to at least discuss it in the work session, that's up to you.
Yeah.
Summer school, I've said it, I'll say it again, we hold our staff.
I have another question about the, the testing day things. Is it not possible that, because I know like the National Honor Society goes and tutors at different places, sports teams go and tutor at certain places, you know, so that wouldn't be allowed?
So, I can.
Oh, Julie's back there, sorry, didn't see you.
Well, maybe I'll just come over here.
Yeah.
I didn't, trying to stand behind a group of people. I didn't hear the original question, because I was moving my things, but with regard to field trips, of course, students are in attendance, because that is an educational activity that is created by the school. And then you had a question about athletic events.
No, I was just saying, you know, why, like, some of our teams and our National Honor Society and clubs go and tutor, you know, are like reading buddies, or things like that.
Right. So if there are activities that are assigned by the, the school for students to participate in, such as, we, Dr. Faust mentioned our T P Y A program a while ago, Transition Program for Young Adults. Part of the educational program for those students is they do community-based instruction.
Right.
And they will ride wave transit, they will go to the senior center, they do jobs, And they will ride wave transit, they will go to the senior center, they do jobs, they carry out, you know, particular job training and, um, you know, vocational opportunities, and they are in attendance, because it is a school event.
Question, so, you know, like, take, take your child to work day, they get, they're, they're still counted in, in that day, so why couldn't we make our own up?
I, I, I'm not aware that when they're, Take Your Child to Work Day lets kids stay in, um, count a present.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can't, based on attendance guidelines, you cannot count a student present unless the school prescribes that event.
Okay. Ms. Mc?
We know this is a problem, we hear about it constantly, so can we, uh, perhaps, ask the staff to come up with three suggestions on how we could meet what Mr. McManus just suggested? 'Cause we know it's a problem, it happens every time, and we just, we've, we've gotta come up with a solution.
No one, you refute that that's not education in itself, to go and work and volunteer in some of the things in our community which need it. That's part of the educational process, that kids are not getting, they're sitting in the cafeteria or the gym, twiddling their thumbs and on their cellphones, but I pass to them now. That's why I said we can do the work session, we can talk about it.
I do believe we need to discuss this one, 'cause I think, remember, we had the principals come and talk about this. And I think sometimes what happens is that you see pictures of someone who's not following the rules. And there are several classrooms where things aren't working, I'll be honest with you, I have a child, and she's not sat in the classroom, she has work. And what happens is the more, the reason why it takes away from so many, we take away so many teachers is because we have so many different settings for testing. So, small setting, modified, um, having to proctor and administer the testing, but I think there's more to it than just saying that they can go and, um, volunteer, because think about it, twenty-three hundred kids at Laney, you may have, we'll say nine hundred test, I'm just taking. Who's gonna accept all those students? Who sets up transportation to get them there? Because I just can't say, um, Josie Barnhart, you're gonna be volunteering at Murrayville, I've gotta provide transportation for her to get there.
The students would take the responsibility to work all that out, all the school would do is approve it.
So the, the other concern that, the, the other concern that we need to acknowledge is that if it is an, a school-sponsored event, then we are responsible for supervising the student, and we're responsible for anything that may happen that isn't planned. So, uh, any kind of outcome where the student may either take action they shouldn't take, or whether they are, um, you know, become the victim of something that should, that should not have happened to them if they had supervision. So I think that, that's the other thing that we need to consider, there, the liability around this.
I think with McManus' point to bring maybe a work session, so we can really spend a lot of time on this, I think it's a good idea. I do wanna take a moment to welcome everybody here today, this is our, some of our, uh, advanced placement teachers, um, and Dr. Fason's gonna kinda emcee this, I understand, so, Dr. Fason's back. We've allotted about twenty-five minutes for this.
Oh, okay. You have some questions, so we have our academic reporters, we wanted to always add that in order to teach a plan. So we have, we have that, and then, um, we also have, um, our HR, I'm just, we have a bullet bit for HR. So we just wanted to tie it back into our strategic plan. I wanna ask the teachers to introduce themselves in just a moment, but before that, we have some questions, and actually, just gonna pass them around.
Are these the same ones you sent us?
You guys know you had a quiz.
So, this is just an opportunity to have some dialogue. I would like for the teachers to introduce themselves, but I also would, um, like, someone to facilitate the discussion of questions. This is not about me talking, this is about you guys sharing the board, or being able to ask them any questions. So if we could also have a board member who will facilitate if needed, and teachers, so we'll talk.
Start introducing, yes.
Sorry, we're here. Um, my name is Jennifer Bailey, I'm a gifted specialist at Ashley and at Hoggart. Um, I'm a departmental teacher from Ashley, we're able to attend today, but also I was an AP Lit teacher for a decade, um, before I was in school, so I'm very familiar with, um, the AP programming, I've scored for them, I've assisted AP coordinators as well. Um, so, it's kind of what I'm doing here. Quick introductions.
Kurt Bud, AP Statistics teacher at Hoggart for nineteen years, and first year AP Calculus teacher, good at coming in this year.
Uh, I'm David Taylor, I teach at Hoggart, and I've been teaching AP Physics for twenty-eight years.
Bless you.
I'm Randy Metz, I teach at Laney, I teach AP Calculus, AP, and then I'm gonna teach AP Calculus, BC next semester.
Valerie Pinsker, Laney High School, um, since I'll be teaching, uh, pre-calc AP.
You have any questions, why don't you ask a question?
Oh.
Is that, yeah, go ahead, you have one? Oh, you.
Okay. For the teachers?
Yes.
Yes. What do you feel are current priorities in terms of AP, what do you feel are our current priorities in terms of AP programming?
Don't wanna jump in?
There's a second, there's a second part to the questions of your thinking. It says, "Are there any ways they should be different?" So what are our current, what do you feel our current priorities are, and do you, are there ways you think they should be different?
I'll just say, I, I think, um, it seems that we have the priority of increasing exam proficiency by ten percent, but, um, what about, um, number of kids taking AP?
Yeah.
What increase the availability? And those two goals may be at odds with each other in some ways as well.
Good point.
So I think we need to decide how that's gonna work.
I would say both of my schools, that's a big concern. If we prioritize, in the immediate, if we prioritize scores, are we not prioritizing serving some of our underrepresented populations? And trying to bring them into their first AP class, which I do a lot of, is looking for those students and encouraging them, and trying to tell them, yes, you can do this, I have a lot of pre-ACT scores, P-ACT scores, anything to give them that encouragement. But the expectation of a student who's not been kind of on that path on their own, may not be a high score. And maybe they get a two, which means they're college-ready. Um, so that's not what's considered a passing score, um, but that still better prepares them for a destination we really want for them. And as teachers, I think that's our priority, is preparing as many students as possible for that next level, um, which sometimes in the short term doesn't necessarily correspond to higher scores.
Ms. Walker, you have a question?
Probably just following up to that, I mean, I, it's having kids, like, two different kids that were doing it, and I think my son didn't do as well in one of the classes, but the, I think the point, the teacher wanted him there because it was rigor, and it wasn't all about the score again, I know it's double-weighted, which I think is good, it's a bonus. So even that C or D would be, you know, looked at a little bit better, but, um, to y'all's point about maybe encouraging more students to take it, how do you feel like we could do that? I mean, is it through parent, the parents are encouraging, you know, that way, or explaining what AP is maybe a little bit better?
Looking at, you know, what courses they've taken in the past, and kinda like pushing them, and saying, you know, I want you, I think you're ready to take this course, even though you may not think that you are. I think it's the teachers that have had the kids before, who can kinda push them into those kind of roles.
And I'd like to welcome our new teacher here, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, please.
Oh, hi, yes, I'm Jennifer Taber, um, I teach AP Seminar and Chemistry at Wilmington Early College.
Nice, welcome. I'm sorry, go.
Are we just going around asking, oh, you, you asked the question, I'm sorry.
He was just gonna, please.
I know for, and this is, it's gonna differ a lot, I think, from subject to subject. I know for, say, AP Statistics, I lost a lot of enrollment a few years ago when Cape Fear classes became more popular. So again, it's a double-edged sword, I, I think, the ability to take full enrollment is a great opportunity for a lot of our students, but that also, a lot of those students would have taken AP Statistics as opposed to maybe a Cape Fear Statistics or some other, Cape Fear math course, they're still getting way more credit. Teaching AP Pre-Calculus this year, it's a big deal that they can go take Cape Fear Pre-Calculus, get away in credit, and no offense to Cape Fear, 'cause they do a fantastic job, I think, with their student body, but they're basically getting the same credit for an easier, less rigorous than what I teach. It's water to gold, again, just like with the increasing scores versus participation, some of these things are a little bit at odds, it's not a man-win situation, I guess.
Ms. Bailey, you have a question?
Yeah, I had a question, um, so, and it's kind of different, and you hit the nail on the head when you said that, um, it differs by subject matter. I mean, lang, literature, language is a lot different than physics, you know, we don't have to do this, you know, um, we have to just use our balls. Um, but my question is, um, how important is autonomy to you all? Like, how would you feel if we mandated a syllabus that all history teachers taught, all calculus teachers taught, all statistics teachers taught? How would you feel if we mandated that, and you just had to just come in and teach this and?
Well, we already, the AP syllabus is already there, we follow, we already have a syllabus that's mandated, more or less. Wanna do all the AP exams, you, you teach the syllabus, we already have that to some extent, I would say.
Yeah, let's eat, let's lays it out exactly.
Yeah, we already have AP syllabus for every subject, given to us from AP.
But do you have autonomy to teach it the way, present it the way that you want?
As of now, I generally do, yes. And that, that is very important.
Ms. Rafferty?
I would also say it's very important to the success. America, two different schools, that's very different populations. So, the strategy of how you might teach it actually, which is how you might teach it to a class at Hoggart, could be very different, or what text is suitable to a class at actually, what text would a class at Hoggart. Or even, I taught three sections of AP the same day, and I might have three different, 'cause this class is, this book is gonna be great for them, but my, my first period, but my third period, they're a little bit weaker, and that's not a good text for them. So you kinda have to teach to the group, so if I was, I think, if everybody feels that you were mandated exactly that, you can do it. Not only would that be frustrating as a professional, but it would be also frustrating with your population if that's not the exact fit for those students.
Ms. Rafferty?
Thank you.
I wanted to follow up with, was it Mr. Bud?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it sounded like you were saying that there's a conflict between your AP and what's going on for dual enrollment at the community college. Is there a solution to take those out of? 'Cause you hadn't thought about it, is there, is there a suggestion on how we could ease that, make it better?
Well, selfishly, I would, I usually have the opinion that if we offer a course, that it shouldn't be allowed, it shouldn't be allowed to go take it at the community college. However, we have so many unique situations, and there are a lot of things that are benefiting from that path. I, I don't know that that's the right answer. I think it does work us a little bit in some of the courses, that they can get basically the same credit, maybe for not as rigorous a course. But I know in our situation, we try to inform students beforehand, whatever your future goal is, let's say, for example, if you wanna be successful in AP Calculus, you need to kinda take Pre-Calculus with me or a couple of my co-teachers, 'cause we're gonna teach it rigorous, and we're gonna have you ready. We can't promise that if you take it at Cape Fear, that you'll be ready for that. And except that, a lot of those students have no intention to ever take AP Calculus. So taking Pre-Calculus at Cape Fear serves the eventual goal that they are shooting towards, so.
I mean, in my classes, I teach Calc AP, if they take Precalc at Cape Fear, they leave a lot of stuff out. I mean, the content is not the same that they're gonna get if they take it at Laney. So then, I'm having to play catch-up in my AP Calculus course because they took it at Cape Fear. And like, I asked the students when I knew I was coming here, I said, you know, tell me some of your struggles. And one kid said, and I'll quote it, "Not a lot of incentive to take AP classes when you can take Cape Fear classes that are easier and you're guaranteed the credit." And so that just speaks volumes to me whenever a kid is saying that too. Like, where are they feeling that from?
Welcome.
So I would say to that point, I mean, teaching to the AP standard is obviously a better rigor for all students, and depending on the student's path, like you say, maybe they just want to get the credit, but some students wanna get that three or more, so they can go to a higher-level university perhaps, that's probably the benefit. I don't know how we get our kids to wanna, I mean, math was not good for me, so, um, but I know it's very valuable. It was valuable both my kids are taking courses, 'cause the rigor was a lot better, in my opinion. So, but it, you know, it's gonna be for the student too, so if you standardize that, it's kinda like, makes it a lot harder to customize, I guess, for different levels.
Ms. McManus?
Question, but a comment about what she said quickly, um, we talked with Dr. Fason one time about threes being scores, except about colleges, Carolina accepts a three, but their average GPA is four point six, folks. So they look at the grade, they don't look at the AP score when it comes to your higher university. I'm trying to listen, being a former high school principal, I'm prejudiced, um, about support of AP. So what is your single biggest dilemma? I'm going to assume and I challenge you, expect you to answer, the question is, kids who are put in your classes, you mentioned Cape Fear preparation is different, that creates a problem, 'cause you gotta teach them. To kids who did not do well in those preclasses, who are really not prepared and have the basics, particularly in the Lit arena, they can't read and then extract above of the content to answer questions. So, I, my question is, do you have, accepting anyone, is there a line or a discussion, a line, who is the purpose to let anyone to AP, regardless of their previous class expectations? Because the counselors meet with kids, and that's so important, they're planning, I wanna go to Chapel Hill, here's what you gotta do to go to Chapel Hill today, it's just that simple. And so I guess we're doing that, I hope we are and doing it correctly, but the challenge is for you, so what can we do to help you have better scores, since that is, I think, one of the questions? But at the same time, the students, you've gotta speak up, because this is your arena. Yeah, and so, I don't wanna sit here and make decisions, or listen, or try to help you, if I, it's just my opinion, not yours. It's a tough, tough situation. I am assuming every one of you wrote your own AP program, I mean, you took over, so some of you, a long time, but, uh, good for you. Do you teach AP Algebra-based and AP Calc-based math, is that?
AP, yeah, well, AP. AP Statistics and AP Math.
Okay.
Interested to hear what Mr. Sutton has to say about this, since he's here, thank you for being here.
Mr. AP teacher?
No, listen, these guys are at such a different level than I am, uh, in what they do and what they teach, I'm telling you. And I know, 'cause I've worked with a couple of these guys, and I, I know, um, but, um, you know, I, I think one of the things that we, we've gotta figure out, I think many kids, um, need more time with an AP class. And our schedule doesn't work exactly right with that. And that's what I struggle with, is, is wanting to create that schedule that's gonna provide the teacher and the student with the, the right time that they need, but we're not able to do that sometimes, and we have a semester course, you know, for AP Psychology, it's taught in the fall, but they won't take that exam until spring. Um, and so, I, if I can make that a year-long class and, and kinda pair it up with another class,
And so if I can make that a year-long class and kind of pair it up with another class and do an A-day, B-day, and make both of them year-long, I think that, that helps. I mean, it just, I need time to digest and to, to really comprehend. And I know our kids do, and, and, and so that, that's one of the things that I, I think is, is something we've gotta kind of process through and work through as, as far as a district and, you know, with, with our classes, is the scheduling of these. Because if I, if I, I've, I've got a kid that wants to take AP Psych and AP Human Geography, and I, I put those together, we make that year-long, that's gonna work out. But if they don't wanna take those two, then I'm gonna have this, this, this student doing A-day, B-day, but he's not gonna be here on B-day, because he, he's not taking that class. And so how do we, it, it's a challenge with, with some of our, our courses and, and matching it up with an AP Calculus and something else that, you know, that, that kids are gonna, because those are, that's a heavy load for a kid to take AP Calculus and AP Chemistry at, at the same time. Or, so again, scheduling, I think, is, is something we gotta work through and maybe look, look at as a district to figure some things out.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton.
Actually, we do an A-Day, B-Day for AP courses. And yes, it's some moving around and figuring out and the complication of what if there was an A-Day? And that has been really effective. I feel like the students that I meet with, they're able to like process the information. Yes, they're taking four and sometimes five or six AP classes at one time, but it's not an hour and a half of content in all of them every day. And it leads them up to the exam and pay, and gives them that full time to kind of cover that. And yes, it's creative scheduling. It's a place where dual enrollment has actually served to be very helpful for us, especially at Ashley, where transportation is kind of a distance, so most of our students are doing dual enrollment online. Well, their B-Day is Introduction to Sociology online at Cape Fear, just something they can't get from us, because we don't offer that. And it's a really high interest, high success course for my students, so we've been able to align it. But I know from talking to teachers and people who work at other schools where they don't have the A-Day, B-Day, it's very, very frustrating, and it's frustrating for the students as well, that there's such a short time in the spring and such a long break from the fall semester to exams.
Ms. Barnhart?
I had two different questions. So one is evaluating the criteria that we're allowing the students to take the AP courses. So we said two different goals. One, I'm always gonna tell you that my goal is I wanna see college credit come from my AP class, three, fours, and fives. But if we're looking at expanding the pool of students, I understand that sometimes that net's not always gonna be there. So when we're saying, if we're gonna look at revamping the criteria or changing it, do you feel that what we have is working? And what needs to be changed that you, where we gathering students that would fit the criteria to be successful in the program? And if that success is not a three, four, five, what would that look like? And help explain that to me with that.
Well, I also, I hate putting that three, four, or five is successful, because a two is college credit. Like, those kids who get a two are gonna take that course again in college and just be very successful. And, you know, if they had not gotten a two, then they might not be as successful.
So a two, three, four, or five, would that be a success?
Yeah, that's what I mean. And I have a problem with it, because I feel like they're, not all schools are equitable. Because, you know, you've got, our schools are all in semesters, you know, you've got absolutely an A-Day. And I feel like the kids don't have time to retain the information. So I really don't feel if the kids took it in the fall and then they took it in the spring, the exam in the spring, that that really shows how much they actually learned. Because I know they could have passed that test if they had taken it when we ended that class. And so I feel like the, the scores don't reflect what the kids actually have learned in the course.
So you're saying they would have to take the test, like, at the end of the year?
Yeah, so they ended January, and then they have to take the test in May. And they, how many kids come back to review? I had three kids come back to review. So it's like, getting the kids to come back is a very difficult thing.
And that sounds like with the scheduling, potentially, if there was a rework of scheduling, that not saying that this high school has the exact same schedule, but to have some consistency with that, whether it is saying allowing for AP courses to be year-round at all of our high schools, not just at one, to give that flexibility but consistency. And then my other question, I know oftentimes AP teachers are kind of in a cycle at each school. And so planning time is very important and collective efficacy. And so one of the things that I have asked the question is, do we give you guys an opportunity to network with our other stat teachers that, you know, you're the Lone Ranger at your school? But when we're having, when we're having a program from a district level perspective, in my opinion, when we wanna build out that program, and the knowledge capture from you is really important, but you're the only one there, so how can I get your knowledge to this person now over at Laney and make sure that their program is also gonna be, be fruitful? And so that was something that, I don't know if that's something that has been looked into or if that's something you'd feel value add, that I'd like to hear about that.
We've been doing that.
I feel like we, we handle that ourselves, emails.
But we've also got PLCs too, with the district. So I think we're doing that, we're doing it at school, but then we're also PLCing with the district too.
I didn't pay them to say that.
Yeah.
We have the gifted specialists, known PLCs at each of the schools. And then we organize PD to sort of give them an opportunity to meet and then kind of arrange how best works for them to have that change. There's Facebook groups too, which are next.
I think Mr. Bud had a question. Good. Mr. Bud, didn't you have your hand up? Didn't you have a question?
Um, yeah.
He's just wiping the sweat off his brow. This light's getting hard.
Twenty-five years of teaching, I finally get a chance to sit in front of you guys. One at a time, there's so much I can talk about.
Stand up.
So just gotta work it backwards. Agree with them about being able to network. We, our community, again, it just differs very much from subject to subject. Again, shared circle, if you're Laney, and I, we both taught statistics forever, and so we, we bounce ideas back and forth forever. You used the word flexibility when you were talking about calendar. Please keep that, please don't mandate that one school's gotta be A-Day, B-Day, and another one cannot, because I think it works very different for, for school. My statistics classes have been one semester, a fall and a spring for a long time, and we have been very successful. We did A-Day several years ago, and it didn't go as well, again, for whatever reason. So, so the block does work for me personally and my subject group. I would love very much if we could start January 1st with a spring semester instead of January 20th or February, whatever it is. That would be a lot. But we, we still have managed to be successful in statistics, even with the shorter spring and even with folks having to wait from January to make the test. Also, please allow that flexibility to continue.
All right, we're gonna go on Ms. Bradford, Ms. McManus, and then Ms. Cravill.
I'm going right back to that, because I hear you saying that this school does the AB Day, and you like your block. So why don't we have consistency throughout? Is, it's very school-specific, right? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but they're all getting a semester. So one is just year-long, but when, if you're looking at the amount of days that they're having the course, they're getting the same, so it still equates to, what, ninety days or however that time period? So a year-long, A-Day, B-Day is... Well, not because of the, because of the test, but if you look at, I mean, they go the, because they test, what is it, May?
May, yeah.
And then, but...
I lose about three weeks.
Yeah, and so what happens is that, well, that's a whole nother.
But it sounded like you were frustrated that you didn't have the option to do either or? Did I hear that right? He's saying he does. No, I know, you're, you're happy, but you're not. Or...
Because that did not work so well for...
So you're saying don't mandate it, which is fine, but do, do the others, do you others have the option of doing it the way you'd like it to be? Because it sounded like Mr. Sutton said no.
We have some options with that. Our, our, I think the issue, like she said, is, is we have some cases where we don't have two courses to kind of pair up together. And that, that is gonna differ from school to school based on who's wanting to take what. And I gotta tell you, it also, and this, I've said this before, it's gonna matter who you gotta teach. These guys are rock stars, and we've got some rock stars as well that are taking it. And people are gonna wanna take it from them, because they know that they're gonna get them where they need to be. And so, you know, I think it, it matters along those lines. We've got some other things that we gotta figure out as well, because we've got a lyceum program that teaches AP, and then we've got outside of lyceum that we've got AP courses. And so that creates some, some different scheduling situations. I, you know, I know Hoggard's got some of that as well with IB and outside of IB and, and those kinds of things. So it, it creates some challenges with the, the programming that we've, we've got for the scheduling.
And board members, I hate to do this, but we are gonna be really late if we don't kind of close this down at this point. So I wanna thank everybody so much for coming in today and chatting.
Can we, can we not extend it for like...
We could, if somebody wants to do that, that's...
I would like to.
I would like to make, can we at least, can, make a motion to extend for ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
We, we got them here.
All right.
And, and it looks like Mr. Bud's getting his dream come true. We don't wanna cut that short.
And in, in that light...
Hold on, hold on. Yeah, Ms. McManus was next for up, and then Ms. Cravill.
Would you repeat what you said? I want everybody to hear about the three weeks.
Yes, so the AP exam day doesn't change. That's national, that's set made, so I lose, my fall, my spring semester is three weeks shorter than my fall in my statistics class. But again, I'm twenty-five years better, and so I'll learn how to pull it off. But it's definitely will be much easier than...
Well, we have a very strong legislative group here who are very active.
We're trying our best.
And we need to have a different calendar. Because I know reviewing second semester, much less with the first semester you taught, which you don't ever see again, some kids do it on their own. You probably try to have meetings, and then second semester, you're short time, plus the exam starts so early, and it's mandated, so.
What is the D R N?
How would, how would everyone having a common planning period affect AP scheduling?
When you say everyone?
Uh, the major subject areas. If you wanna, if everyone had a, that's been suggested, so. If everyone had a common planning period, how would that, how would you handle that? Would that help AP or hurt it?
Like you're talking about across the, the schools?
Your individual school, yeah.
Like, at ours, I know we, we're trying to do that with our EOCs, like Math 1. They've got the same planning, Biology, they've got the same planning, so they can kind of...
How does that affect AP?
They said they do district PLCs.
Aren't they normally first, second, or third when we have older kids in the classes? Or not, not all of them? I think they cross schools at times, it would be challenging.
So if there's one thing this board could do to help you, what is it? One thing you all agree on, that we can do to help?
Magic wand, what do you want?
It's your chance.
That we can do.
Everybody can have a natural number.
The calendar, okay?
Yeah, why don't we just start on one end and go around the table? One thing.
More time with students.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, I was the same thing.
More time with students, okay.
Our anxiety's small.
That's pretty much the answer?
I'm just kidding. What does that look like?
Ms. Cravill?
So I, the, to kind of close this out a little bit, I think that some of us may not know exactly what kind of training and professional development that you all get. You, you ask for, you seek out, you attend. Could you talk to us a little bit about the uniqueness of being an AP teacher? You know, as far as that goes, and why you had expressed that need for autonomy? Give me the same syllabus, but let me do it my way. You know, let me do it how I'm comfortable. So could you talk to that, to us a little bit? And I know your, your disciplines are different, but...
I think AP institutes are fantastic. I can speak very subjectively to teachers, but I know I attended one, I first started in the statistics program at Hoggard, it was fantastic. And then several years ago, I felt like I needed to go back to one, just to kind of get fresh ideas, you know, you know, see new, hear new perspectives from other teachers around the state, and it was fantastic again. So I would, especially for new teachers, I would make it a requirement that they attend one. I'd pay for it, make sure they get that training as often as possible. Go back every few years if did you felt the need to. That is the best.
Yes, it's very, very professional.
Yeah, it's very good.
They're the teacher, like everything, I, when I went as a first-year teacher, I taught all levels of 12th grade English, that was a very small school. And every single thing I got that week, I kept the entire time that I taught, because I could go back to it. The one other thing I would recommend, that's something that maybe not all teachers get to take advantage of, is after you've been teaching a few years, you get the opportunity that you can apply to score. And scoring radically changed what I did. I had a better sense of, it's called being a reader. And so I sat as a reader for AP Lit and AP Seminar, and they do offer it online. Now it's now, that came out of the pandemic. But my score, my hour score radically improved, having that experience. It's particularly impressive, I think, because it's, it was twelve hundred English teachers in a room for a week, like living and breathing this AP exam. The one challenge is that sometimes it's at the end during testing or during workdays, and our county doesn't allow teachers to call it professional development, because you receive a gift, a financial gift. So you have to use your personal days or take leave without pay, which many teachers can't afford to do. I mean, the gift isn't that substantial.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, that's something to encourage. I know that there are counties that they put it in the paper and give some people, to cover this up. It usually is at the very end, so for me, it was workdays, and it was so helpful, it was worth it to me. But I think, if anyone's done it or knows anyone is...
I totally agree.
It's amazing. And you can't be selected, you have to have some experience first, but it really is beneficial.
Ms. Bradford?
Anybody else wanna add to that?
Oh, I was just gonna say, in terms of pre-calculus AP, the first year that it's being run, the training this summer was amazing, and I hope I can keep going, because I'm sure the class is going to evolve a little bit as each year goes on, so I hope I get that opportunity to do it again. And I'm glad you spoke to being an AP reader, because right now they're pushing for pre-calculus AP readers. I filled it out, but I hope I get compensated.
Good luck.
So I hope that is an option, but just the networking through, through the AP institute is phenomenal.
Ms. Bradford?
So I appreciate the seven of you coming, we all do. If, when you go away, you think, oh darn, I wish I'd asked them this, or I wish I'd said that, email us. Email us, we don't wanna wait another twenty-five years before we see you. You know, email us, we're here to listen.
Can I ask Dr. Faust a question?
You can ask Dr. Faust a question.
How much the, I know everybody says, oh, well, it's offered at Hoggard, so let's just let you go from Laney to Hoggard to take this test. The, that's really not doable, right? Because you would either have to miss the class before, some of it, or you'd have to leave your class early to get to it. So that's a question that several people emailed me and said, make sure I ask.
Say more about that.
Question, getting a test over to the, where they send the test?
No, it sounded like, let's say, and, and it happened with, with my son. He wanted to take German at Hoggard, but he was at Laney. So we looked into the opportunity, where the feasibility of getting in the car, driving yourself to another class, and then coming back. So you're either missing the end of your class that you're leaving to get to your new one on time, or you have to leave your, the one that you've driven to early to get to your other one on time. So the, and people keep saying that we could do that, but I just don't see how we possibly could do that.
So typically, that's done with Cape Fear Community College. It usually starts your first two classes, or it's the switch at lunch.
Okay.
So it gives them that time to get to it, and so it's either first and second, or third and fourth.
Gotcha.
We don't go between, to my understanding, they regularly, we don't go from Laney to Hoggard to take an AP course.
Huh? It has been done.
Eighty years ago.
Yeah, it was a long time ago. It was buffered with like an online course.
Yeah, I would say if someone needed German or Chinese, now you can see DPS.
Right, that's what we ended up doing, right.
Well, again, for the second time, I hate to cut this, sure, but we are running out of time. So thank you again, each and every one of you for being here. We do value you extremely, and we, you know, again, thank you for being here, and hopefully we'll do this again and spend some more time at it. So, thank you very much. We will carry on. We will carry on with Mr. McManus's letter C.
Okay, well, I'll try to make it brief.
Which one are we on, letter C?
C.
C, thank you.
We're on the sixth, testing day concerning the summer school reading camp. I would still like for us to discuss in our work session, all this for work session, to discuss, lack of a better word, mandated summer school. Every time we looked at the test score, I've read everyone on New Hanover County. Our scores are, the kids are so far behind in their literacy and their math. But yet, we worry about them repeating. We got to, we could work out something. We're passing these kids, and they can't read, and they can't write, and they can't do basic math. And they even want to know why our scores are low, and we can't come up. I think we, summer school.
Yeah.
We need, if they come, they can get. But if not, I think the teachers are held accountable for everything we guys are holding students in the past somewhere.
And what we had talked about was third grade, looking, you know, being at the line and saying. Dr. Faison?
I actually, when I saw this, I don't know if this is working. When I saw this on the agenda, I actually have something that I think will help you. Or this, if you'll take and pass this down. Take one of my steps.
I don't know exact, I didn't know exactly what your thoughts were, Mr. McManus. But I know this has been kind of a passion of yours, so I kind of thought that you were looking at some increasing summer, summer school. So what I thought it would be important, and this is just to share with you guys, is these are the summer school programs we've done the last couple of years, and the funding sources. So as you had that conversation, I think it would be beneficial for you to see this and what funding we have available. And I just wanted to provide that.
Thank you.
Mr. Jim.
Yes, ma'am.
I did want to add too, that was something that we got for a pilot program. The summer school adds a whole nother dynamic of transportation, everything. But that was something that Dr. Faust had asked to pilot for our fourth graders, a tutoring program that we got, we applied and we got the money for it. So in addition to summer school, we can look at tutoring programs. There are groups out there wanting to come in and do that. And so we were able, how many schools were you able to utilize from NCIS?
We're using this for two, how many, what's the total? Two, is it just two?
Two schools.
So two schools have it. But I mean, that could be something, if that shows to be success, that could be something that we could potentially continue to grow. Is that my understanding of that, like to add more schools in and do that?
Two, yes, if it grows, if we get the results that we're looking at.
So I'm saying, in addition to this list, it might be good to look at what initiatives can we do onsite? Because I know from talking to staff, that's probably the biggest concern, is the kids that don't show up. You're like, well, the kids don't show up, so we need to work with the kids that really need it. And how do we do that, and where do we do that? Well, that's during the day when we have them. And so what does that look like?
Will be a good discussion again for the work session.
Absolutely.
But that's something I really think could be monumental in helping our scores.
Right.
Because we're passing kids and we look where we are.
Yeah.
Let's just be honest, okay?
Well, and if you look at Read to Achieve there, the monies have gone up substantially, and that's third grade reading.
Third day?
Third grade, yeah, so it'd be $386,000 for this summer.
We're doing this now, Dr. Faison, or we want to do it, where are we on this?
Turnoff.
And I just wanted to make sure you had this, I didn't really, I didn't know what the discussion was about, but I don't.
Well, actually, all I want to do is bring it up to discuss in our work session, so we don't have to spend all the time talking about it.
Oh, okay.
That's the whole point, some brevity.
Yeah, well, yes, these are the things that we are currently doing and have done some of them in the past. The thing that I want to draw your attention to is the column that is highlighted, where it says, will funding be available summer '24? So the only funding that we will have available will be the newcomers camp and Read to Achieve from the state and the federal government. So anything, any decisions that we make as a district, we will have to find some funding for. So I just wanted to bring that up, because the state doesn't do, you know, before if you didn't pass, and they did those things. They do not do that anymore. What we do is the Read to Achieve camp for our third graders, our rising third graders, who are not successful at E O Y, and our fourth graders, who were, rising fourth graders, who were not successful on their E O G. So anything that the board is looking at, you would need to look at funding to compensate with that, I mean, to align with that.
So, yeah, I heard at the NCSBA conference two weeks ago, went to a seminar when we were talking about, what does it actually look like when we, when we are caught up? You know, so that people can kind of look at, you know, measuring those kind of things. And they were putting together some sort of rubric on, or guidelines on what you can do to reach, whatever they come up with as you, you're making progress to, you know, in recovery. So do you think that any funding might be forthcoming based on what they have, I mean, not, that's, that's a, yeah, okay. But would that be worth, you know, lobbying for, once we get the guidelines on what does recovery look like?
So what happens is, I mean, we have, it's almost like a double-edged sword. So we are ranked number 15 in the state academically. So the General Assembly isn't going to say, well, New Hanover County needs it. They're going to be looking at other schools that are. We only technically have five low-performing schools. So we don't typically fit or check the boxes for getting money from the state. And then Read to Achieve is something that's required by the state. We had summer schools some years ago, and we're giving bonuses, we couldn't find teachers to do it.
Right.
And then we had it this summer, we sent out all the invitations, all these three things, and the kids didn't come. We still didn't have, so we have to pair it with, do you want to have the, the human capital to run it? And at the high school level, right, at the high school level, it's going to be credit recovery, which we do that throughout the year. At the elementary, the only thing that's required would be Read to Achieve. And then we will, you'll be running into this group that's sophomores, so now it'll be 22 credits. So technically, it's, it'll be a double-edged sword, so it's almost like, I have my 22 credits, I'm going to go.
It's all about our expectations.
And they can't read right.
Everything we do is about expectations.
Karen, Mr. McManus for restrooms.
I want the kids to know we're listening to them. I'm just curious if we can find out, when we have the work session, what's going on in schools to remedy this? Because I live in the Hagerd district, the Roland Rice district, and the Alderman district, and I'm here all the time. But I also hear from a lot of students. And we went to the Student Voice, represented every single school, and we heard from all four high schools. So, and I've said something to Dr. Faust about it, that we've got to pay attention to it.
You're right.
I mean, when, when a young man comes, stands up and talks to us and says he can't have the bathroom stopped up, destroyed, can't go to the bathroom, no toilet paper, no anything, it's all, I mean, are we short custodians, or are we not monitoring, or do we need to make monitoring? We got to show the kids we're listening, just like we showed the teachers that we're listening.
Okay, Mr. Anderson? Well, Mr. Anderson, express that.
I think it's a combination of a lot of things. I mean, obviously, part of it is student behavior. I mean, if they're flushing the toilet paper down the toilet, and stopping it up, flooding the restrooms, you know, that's, that's part of student behavior. I mean, it's, that's nothing new. We've been dealing with that for a long time. We've had a lot of vandalism, and we're trying to keep, not only keep up on the repairs, but improve. This summer, we partnered with the Advocats and had all six game bathrooms in the main building painted. And we, you just recently approved a budget transfer that had an additional $60,000, so that we can do some more work. It could have something to do with custodians. It fluctuates a lot, and we're not fully staffed. But it changes, you know, day to day, week to week. I do know that as far as, we, we've heard from, from certain schools, and it's a small percentage of schools, but we have heard, and we talked to principals at the last principal meeting, about custodial supplies. No school should be without paper towels, toilet paper, essential supplies. And, you know, we'll, I'm speaking for acting now, but we did the presentation together. And we will, we'll make sure that they have those supplies. We have reevaluated the formula that we use for allocating our budget, taking into consideration that custodial supplies have gone up about 50, or 50% since it was last done. And I know finance has reallocated some revenue from community use to those schools that have a high level of community use. So there's, there's several things that affect this, and there are several things that we're doing to address it.
Ms. Walker, and then Ms. Bradford.
So I was just going to say, hi, hi, Mr. Anderson. Well, I know it's different for different schools, and I love hearing the Advocats are helping out there. I know, well, in the previous work I did, you can order certain things industrialized. Like we're talking about vandalism of, like, or the toilet paper holder, or the paper towel holder, or there's ways that you can get them that are really sturdy and locked. Maybe that's something you need to look at, if, like, say, one bathroom is, there's no toilet paper because of vandalism, can we figure that out? You know, I mean, I guess it's, we make it harder for people to pull the toilet paper out and shove it down the toilet, you know, I think that would be worth. It's probably dependent on the school.
We do use, you know, heavy-duty products. I've seen where our maintenance department has put some in where there's literally a padlock on it.
Yeah.
But there's nothing we can do for them pulling toilet paper from the roll, putting it in the toilet, and flushing it. And it just runs, runs off the roll.
I've seen, I've seen holders that are harder to get, like, you only get one piece off at a time, or, I don't know.
Those are, you know, you can put those in, you cannot use those type of toilet paper dispensers in handicapped stalls.
Okay.
Ms. Bradford?
I agree with Mr. McManus. I mean, over a year ago, you know, I heard from students that said, you know, we just leave campus to go home to go to the bathroom, because we can't go to the bathroom at school. And that is extremely disturbing, and multiple fronts. And I have, you know, only the students who told me that that's what they do, and the families that told me that that's what they do, to, you know, for my proof. But we've got to do something, because it's a problem. And we just can't keep saying, you know, it's this, it's that, or what, we have to come up with solutions.
And I think, and it's a great point, and I, but I do believe that we would need to have principals involved in that discussion. I think a lot of students may not feel comfortable using the restroom, not because of the condition of the facility, but the number of students in there, maybe what's going on in there.
Discipline.
I don't, I don't know, I'm just speculating. But I think collectively, you know, with principals, with staff, maybe we could.
Which is a topic that we're going to have right after the next topic. We just skipped one, but next, our next topic is CTE nursing allied health program.
We talked about that.
We already talked about that, we're passing through that. So our next topic is, not.
We did not talk about that in open session.
Okay.
So, and I would like to reiterate that without eyeball rolls. Hugh, go ahead.
Well, we're talking about suspension discipline, I, it really bothers me, and no disrespect to you, Mr. Anderson whatsoever, because I, you're one of my favorite people. But to say that kids are going to misbehave, and they're going to stop up toilets is not acceptable. I think that we've got to do something about it. If we have to say that the office gives out toilet paper, and the kid signs it out and bring it back. I mean, you got to start somewhere, it is bad.
At least we'll know who's going to the back.
It is bad.
Keeps up with who's in there.
I mean, it's just, it's just.
Are we talking CTE? I thought that was what we moved to.
Well, that's finishing up, I guess.
Okay, sorry.
A lot of kids slip into the teacher's lounge if they can get into it.
Well, at the last board meeting, Mr. McManus, you said for kids to go by to see the principal and ask for toilet paper. So why don't we tell the parents just to drop off a roll with the principal, you know, when they drop their kids?
So let's carry on with Mr. McManus' title.
The last thing is we need.
Nursing, nursing, because she just brought the point, Ms. Cradell just brought the point, that we didn't talk about in open session. So.
But I thought we were going to talk about it in a work session, we were assured.
The nursing, the nursing.
CTE, that's next.
Do you want, you want to talk about nursing? The nursing?
No, because I think we're going to talk about that when we get to the work session. There's a lot of, we heard a lot of things.
How about suspensions?
Got to go into closed session.
All right, I want to.
Go ahead.
Jump in on Mr. McManus's conversation. Based on some of the conversations we've had today, wherever we've had them, interested in knowing about if all schools are going to Novant, and if all school, how does a hub school get designated? And how do we get students, again, from one school to the next, for these specialty classes if they're not offered at their schools? So those were points that I thought we were going to talk about in this 10-minute time.
Okay. Dr. Faison, would you mind hitting that for us? Come on, come on back. Come on back, and here she is again.
Get your stacks, get your stacks.
So if I understand correctly, you're asking, I assume, we talked about how one of the things we want to do with CTE is not to do everything wide and try to make sure we focus and have some premier schools? Is that what you're talking about?
Right, I'm with you on that. If we're going to have premier schools, how, what's the criteria that we're going to use to say, Hagerd gets this, Laney gets this?
Good. Enrollment of students, number one. And then the CTE department has actually already met with the principals and the APs over CTE, and I think some other people that the principals have brought to the table, to look at what would be best served at each school, based on facility enrollment, number one, is what do our students want? What can we already do, and what would not move too many pieces? So that's how we've done that. As far as getting students from one place to another, I think that will be something, we haven't gotten to that point. It's about, because we don't know, you know, it's like, will you, you apply to go to the STEM school, and this is your school? And, or do you apply to go to Hagerd, because it has this special premier, and that is your school? So we're looking at some different things, more, and it might be a time where you want to go from this campus to that campus. That is something we will have to look at with Mr. Anderson, and I will have to, or mainly Mr. Anderson. But right now, we are trying to make sure that our schools do things and they do it well. I don't think you're going to see that, we're trying not to change and take away from schools, but to enhance what they already have. So I just wonder how many, how much movement would be there?
I guess the question I was trying to follow up on was, I heard earlier today that New Hanover High School and Ashley High School were going to be designated as the premier allied health programs.
For nursing, mhm.
And so I was wondering if, if, if we're hearing that the Ashley program isn't, you know, isn't there, you know, in its entirety, then how did that one get chosen? Or why wouldn't perhaps, you know, Laney High School have gotten chosen because they were STEM? And then wondering if, let's just say, I wanted to do culinary, and culinary was going to be at Hagerd. And so could I apply for open choice to go there, just like I could apply to go to their IB program? I mean, are we at that point with CTE that we are allowing students to, if we're going to pick hubs, are we allowing students that opportunity?
I think honestly, we have to look at how premier we get, to be honest with you. Okay, so if we get to the point where you and I have talked about boating, it's no secret that that would be a great place, a great CTE aspect pathway to bring to us is boating. So we get to the place where we can actually offer boating and offering a premier, and the need is there, we will look at those things. Right now, we're doing that with New Hanover and Hagerd with the nursing, and then we offer that, but the need was not there.
New Hanover and Ashley for the nursing?
No, I'm saying, the students at Hagerd, so the students at Hagerd, when they get to the clinical aspect, they will go to New Hanover. But at this point in time, and Mr. and Mr. Anderson can speak to it more, when we offer transportation, there was no need for transportation. So I, right now, we're trying to look at the programs, enhance the programs. And I, I think we probably would have to go to probably a, looking at it like Laney and STEM. But right now, the biggest focus we're trying to see is, what is the enrollment? What are the needs from our audit? We haven't got to that point because we haven't made those, we're still exploring.
So is, oh, sorry.
I want to switch gears and ask a question with mentorships and internships, because I know when I'm out in the community and talking with people, that's something I'm passionate about. And to help streamline that process, the district adopted Zello. So as we meet with businesses and organizations who want an apprenticeship program, and I'm saying this for the community partially, or mentorship or internship, what does the process look like to say, hey, Dr. Faison, I am in the auto mechanic ministry, industry, and I have these two internships, X amount, that they can get in our system, so that our students know the opportunity is available? Because I think that's the piece beyond the K-12 that I'm really excited about, too. So our, how, as a board member and as the community listening, would they go to help create those opportunities?
We actually, and I'm glad you asked that question, because we always need more. They would actually, they could reach out, if you ever have anyone, you could send them my way. I'm going to actually send them to Mr. DeMarcus Nixon, who is actually overseeing that. Mr. Nixon and I actually had a conversation with Hendrix not too long ago, because we do have people who want to partner with us. And when they want to partner with us, we reach out and make that happen, if possible.
And we are out of time on that one, so we'll go back to Mr. McManus.
Just last but not least, I would like to add to the work session, with consideration. We have to do something about cell phones, too. And I just truly believe.
Wait, the point of order, that's not on our agenda. Let's move on to something that's on the agenda.
Well, we can talk about discipline. Point, point. I took off three or four. You asked a lot of questions that I didn't.
But you want to speak to discipline, or suspensions?
I just want specificity. We've said this before, same old time. Rather than they don't, they continue not to follow directions, or they were, continue to be disruptive, so that we know exactly why they're being suspended. They told a teacher to whatever, or they threw a stapler, whatever, so we can defend ourselves. We know what they did.
Yes, sir.
Right now, they just lump it. We don't know what that means.
Right. So more specific.
I mean, what's hard about telling what a kid did, so we at least know why, why they made that call. And I support the person who made the call, but I'd like to know exactly what they.
So first, to help me understand, with the suspensions, the, making the board aware of what was done, who would we be making aware?
Right now, would, if I remember correctly, the elementary schools particularly, they say continued disruption or.
Disrespect.
Refuse to follow directions or disruptive.
Or disrespect.
What are they doing exactly to disrupt?
So in the, there's a platform that we use. So when they do the due process and they write it up, it's written in there. But then there's a code that we have to use to make what.
Do we write that program, or is that something we ball?
No, that's state.
So you can't change it or add to it?
And so you, so if, if someone, if the principal wanted to go in and say, well, what did Charles do on this date? He just goes in and reads that. He will know that it may be disruptive, but then if he wants to find out, it is specific in there.
Well, if I recall correctly, when Julie handed out the information way back, when we were looking at it, it was in little arenas. There was no, and I asked that, I've always asked for specificity, because in that way I understand better what is or maybe shouldn't.
But I'm asking, is the board wanting to know?
Well, I'm asking for the board to consider that, yes.
So if that were the case, then you have been saying, it's like, there are multiple incidences that come to the office. If you wanted, we'd have to do it in a closed session.
Well, no, we don't, we don't want to know unless it's brought to the board.
In the cases that we hear, I think that's what he's saying.
All you have to do is ask the question.
We want more specificity in the cases that we hear, right? Is that what you're saying, Mr. McManus?
Yeah. All you have to do is, when we're doing that, ask that question.
Can I ask a clarification? Is it when I provide you a discipline data summary for you to know, like, the total district trends?
If I recall, like, a disruptor or.
Or is it for individual student cases?
I'm trying to go to.
Tell me the different categories of.
It was non.
Yeah, disruptive behavior, taking that difference.
Right. So for overall discipline data?
Well, like, if I ask you, go ahead, pardon me. Like, I ask you a question about specific behavior.
With regard to individual student behaviors, I can respond and provide you the narrative. We have the narrative for every student incident. The problem with trying to provide you a district-level summary is it's going to take many hours to give you 2,000 or more narratives. So the reason codes are assigned is so they can be analyzed in data reporting. So I think at the request of the board, I can provide that at any point in time.
And Ms. Bratford?
Mr. McManus, under your discipline, and we're going to take this to work session, right? Can, can we also talk about the, the situation going on with this vaping? Because it, it really kind of ties to discipline in terms of vaping, and, you know, it's just an out-of-control situation.
Maryland, it's all kids.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that that's included in the agenda for that work session.
Chair, just last point, to this discussion here, maybe we were talking about bathrooms, vaping, things like that. Can we do it like a principal survey? Like, because Mr. Anderson said, we should have them in in the conversation. Maybe that'll help our work session conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's an awesome idea, Ms. Walker. Yeah. Okay, we're going to carry on to committee reports.
Can I ask one question about when the, the discipline data report? I mean, isn't there like a line that we have to kind of stay behind, so that we don't know too much of the details in case somebody appeals, whatever discipline was handed to them?
Yes, when you get district-level summary data, you're getting that for trends. You can't have, well, you should not have student-level information at that point in the event that a hearing needs to come to you, and you need to be able to review that information objectively. But with individual student matters that I bring to you in closed session, of course, that's appropriate for those questions to be asked and for the narrative to be part of it.
Okay, we're going to carry on with our committee reports. Head Start.
Did we, did we decide that we're not doing H because we're doing that at the meeting? H was equity, diversity, inclusion?
What else to talk about?
Yep, that's what the motion was before. So we're over to Head Start, Still.
Sure. So you have the Head Start committee members, you have the Head Start report for November, which reflects the enrollment data in October. We are, the, we are at good attendance rates. That's something that I know that we've been having a focus on. And a couple of the highlights was the Fall Festival and the puppet show. So with that, I know that you're going to be seeing the MOU, and I'm assuming we're going to be approving that next week's board meeting for another five-year Head Start contract.
Any questions? Board members? Nope.
I, I was looking at, at the report, and I just want to, I just want to make sure that we continue to focus on the, the number of those kids in that program that are, you know, coming out of a single, single-parent family home. And as we're allocating resources, it, it's just something to keep in mind, that there's such a high number of them that, that, you know, they're coming from single-parent homes.
Well, I know that was one initiatives in the enrollment process this year, that Johnson Pre-K, they actually had people onsite to help and assist with our families to get enrolled in school. So I think it's a proactive measure of trying to include our families. But I'll just make sure I get that.
Ms. Crable?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I wanted to, I'll direct this question to you, and you can ask Ms. Bradford, is what can this board do about single-family homes? I mean, that is way beyond our purview, you know, to even make that even talkable, you know, other than just being trapped. But I, I'm just wondering, what are we talking about?
Ms. Bradford?
For the sake of time, I, I really don't feel like answering. If, if it's not obvious to Ms. Crable, then I'm not going to change her mind, so I just move on.
No, the, I have a question for our board. What can we as a board do to influence a single-family, changing a family's dynamic from single-family to other than single-family? That's what my point was.
I think what I, good.
I'm just saying, I don't, I don't care if they're single or two-parent households. I'm, I want to give them as much help as they need. So that's irrelevant to me as a board member.
Well, I, I, you know, I think that the point is, we need to, well, and I, and I would agree, we need to support all the families coming in. But single parent, single parents are, you know, they do have additional difficulties, so we do want to support them. But again, I do agree that we want to support all the parents. Carry on Legislative Committee?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. The board voted to approve the legislative networking event that'll be held on December 13. And so I'm going to be working with Ms. Louie, so she will send out the invite. But like, we recapped at that meeting, it'll be a networking opportunity between Pender, Brunswick, and New Hanover County, and really an opportunity for the superintendents to share about some of the successes that are going on and potential opportunities for improvement, and allow us to open dialogue with their county neighbors in the hopes that we can see some crossover of things that we'd like to advocate our state-level officials to be able to support some different initiatives. So going on with that, vaguely from the committee meeting, we had said maybe we could plan out a work session after with the participants and really kind of go more in depth of what, what we hear from that. But that is, that has yet to be planned, because this is still coming out. So those invites should hopefully be going out, and we'll know soon in attendance.
Any questions, Courtney? Ma'am?
Is there an agenda that you have yet that's like established, that we could be able to kind of view?
I, I will have Ms. Louie, I think, I don't, has she, I'm going to see if she's sent out the invites, but I think it should be on there. So I can have it sent out, and if it's not, if it hasn't been sent out to you guys, it can.
And I am correct that the board members, as, as a group, are invited?
Yes, it'll be the boards, all boards, and some, Pender and Brunswick have said only a few of their members are coming, so their whole boards are not coming, as well as county commissioners and planning managers, CFOs, and any support staff that the superintendents might need as well.
With that being said, I will entertain a motion, our last piece of motion. Business is adjourned. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
First and second. And all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Y'all have a safe trip, and a good night. See you next week.